I have hit record.
It is.
I already promoted Mike, he's just got a.
So it is six thirty-three and I'd like to call for this special meeting of the Danville Board Directors. We're especially only visit to Thursday, this is our regular December meeting, we had to move to thank you all for your. Building this to be flexible, it was beneficial for another thing we were doing as she was. I'm Clayton Carter with the chair, we're going to go around and introduce ourselves really quickly to my immediate right is.
Molly Griesen Clark.
Eric Hewitt.
Dave, Dave Poe White's chair.
Matt Foster Superintendent.
Mike Conchessi Director of Finance and Operations.
Sarah Lott, and I have Mike Moriarty on say hello. If you can't, the Assistant Superintendent Mike Moriarty is on line, we have one visitor and an individual who's interested in potentially becoming. A student rep for the school board, is that correct? And her name is Kiara Matu. Yeah, thank you for coming, thank you for your interest. Alright, are there, does anybody have any additions or changes to this agenda tonight? I don't know if any, nobody has any, that's great.
Um, did we, do we have any update on the heating controls?
So I will tell you that we, I spoke to Sarah who's spoken to.
Brandon.
Brandon, and there's not a third, there's not yet a third. Good. So we have two estimates for now and we've got a third, we didn't have a third, we can't bring three of them back and legally that's a big enough number that we have to look at three or have a third one refused.
I believe that we have to at least ask for three, we have to make the attempt for three.
So we're making an attempt to get a third one, so that's going to be a separate project.
Get one and you can just claim sole source and go with that.
That would cool down off the agenda for this.
He's reading that green book tonight. Thank you.
That's why we dropped, I had this conversation with Sarah, little bit of my.
I'm waiting for these meetings, that's what I do.
Yeah, I can talk about it a little bit.
So it's just, we're still in the process. Not that, no, no additional changes moving down the minute from November sixth. Well Molly, Molly loves writing minutes, Molly's favorite thing in the world.
Thank you Molly.
So I can write the minutes, she wants to write the minutes, so. Any questions about the, any questions about the minutes? No questions here, none, I can't, a motion to approve the November sixth twenty twenty-four minutes as they're written.
True.
Thanks sir, that's a motion from Dave.
I'll second.
Add a second from Eric to approve those minutes in further discussion. All favor of November sixth minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, moving down, the next thing on the agenda is the superintendent report, there was an update to the superintendent report. With some relevant information, Matt, is there anything that's not in the report that you need to tell us or anything that you'd like to expand on?
I don't have here. Thank you for asking, I don't believe so at this time, I think every, I think it is up to date. Fact checking information, we're working with, excuse me, fact finding, I've been working with Chris Leopold, he has that information, he's going to be looking over it and getting back to me with the need for clarifications for. Staff, support staff negotiations, that'd be the only update.
The fact group's going to need to meet pretty soon here.
I will know more tomorrow.
Let me know about that, just unrelated to this board, but let me know about that.
Sure.
Especially for introducing a new member from CCSB.
We will have that official Monday night.
Okay, so any questions from board members about anything listed here? I know Eric had a question in the last month and I wasn't able to get him an answer too quickly about maybe adding on people to the inspired.
Any people can, we had a new person add just last.
I meant to give you that information, I forgot, then I forgot to ask the question. I can get you invited if you'd like to, there's two more meetings.
Eric, we're open to everybody, please come.
Oh, okay.
Sorry about that.
There's no secret decoder ring or anything, just.
Learning session about the street.
Strategic plan.
Remembered to answer that question and then probably forgot.
Yeah, it was just, yeah, I think we asked about like who gave the presentation.
And you asked it, you asked the follow up and no, no. I didn't ignore your email, I forgot about your email.
I've done that before.
I've forgotten my email, so I'm left to.
Strategic design, design team, team.
It includes all the members of the issues leadership team and then a bunch of other members.
Many members, students, love to have Kiara there. Yeah, just walk across the street.
They give you dinner, but they don't want to get a snack.
We're going to give you a light dinner, we've decided this next time, because first it was too heavy for dinner, then snacks were enough, now we're going to go for the light meal.
First time it was lasagna and everyone asleep, and the second time it was crackers.
I think they should do lasagna again.
Yeah.
Note to self. You get on the board, that's going to rep, we'll listen, we'll take that into consideration.
Mike, can you hear me? Mike Moriarty?
I don't, he's there, I just.
Can you, can you hear me?
Here you know. Check in with you, make sure that if you have anything to add for superintendent report, anything that you'd like to add different from your, from your report that was submitted.
Uh, not at this time, no.
Hope you're feeling better.
Thanks.
In the principal's report, when we moved the meeting, I had to pick between the fourth and the fifth, and the fourth was somebody's birthday and the fifth, I didn't realize that Natalie was not available, so I, I picked the fourth was Sarah's birthday. And the fifth was Natalie was available after the fact, so Natalie's not here, but she could have been here the third or the fourth, so the day she couldn't be here is today, so it's not, she's not just skipping out on us, and there's a lot of stuff in the report here from her.
Yep.
Sarah, if she has anything, otherwise we can ask questions of Natalie at any time and we can see.
You can also attempt to ask them to me on her birthday. The, a little bit of an additional update on the heating stuff, we have the one quote, we've had a second company come and. Be here in the building and are working on the quote, we just don't have a quote. I would like to have a two to be able to compare them, but.
I would feel comfortable with two.
Yeah. I don't have any questions for you.
Any questions for anybody?
Or can Natalie and I try to answer.
It's not that fine, I mean.
I know, I'm looking at the survey, is that, yeah, outside of the survey results in terms of what you observed, is it still an issue?
Not nearly, I think it's gone down even the years. Where that has been addressed this year, it's not to say that it's not happening.
But it's not the hot card issue with it.
This is see Jonesburg scoring.
With regards to the, the presentation she did.
Right.
Correct. Just to let you know, Tim Sanborn has joined the, the meeting.
Okay, he's going to be promoted now, he's going to say hi. Hey Tim, if you can hear me, go ahead and say hi for the record.
Aye.
Say hi, say hi, I'm Tim Sanborn, board member, like that, so we know you.
Introduce yourself.
The reporter's going to want to know you're here.
Provide your blood test.
So Tim Sanborn's joined us. That's well, also Tim, did you have any questions, since I just backtrack a little bit, Tim, do you have any questions for the superintendent and or the principal on either of the reports?
No, I did not.
So it's good that we have a lot of kids participating in sports, I always, I'm always pleased to see that.
It's a great sign. Very good sign.
It's hard to book out the gym and impossible to book out the gym for the next three months. Yeah, there's a lot, there's a lot of gym.
Great research.
They booked it like.
Forty-five minutes available, there's going to be kids bouncing basketballs at every door asking us to eat.
Yeah.
Can you just get on out? Alright, so there we go, I have also the student services report that's in here. I have a question on the student service report about this hire, is this, is this somebody in Danville?
Sir, it was very nice to see the. The newspaper with our students in.
The Art Honor Society, right?
Yeah, so submitting that stuff, fantastic.
And then also, also in the newspaper since, since you brought it up is our green and gold, our green and gold winner applied.
Right.
It was also listed in the newspaper.
Really puts us in a good light.
That's always, always, always positive.
Always a good thing.
It was off the op ed page, it was off the op ed page or the, or the letters to town. Alright, and then I guess I had a question about the specific hire that was listed in the.
Update, the student services.
Is that person working Danville? No, no. Good, so that's a CCSU, that's a CCSU, and then that's all, I, because he did it up on our agenda for about five minutes because it was misunderstood.
That's correct, yep. Thank you for clarifying.
That's somebody.
The reason why I was thinking is originally because you were the one that was asking it, so, yeah.
Never mind any of that, that was about a hire that has to be up to the CCSU level, not the Danville.
Yep.
That's good, okay, so student service to report the rest of it, anybody with any questions? Here ain't none, I know what we're all here for, we're going to get to it, before we, you guys want to go ahead and skip ahead and before we get to the budget, we want to talk about the mission and vision fund request. Sure. Let's see that, the mission and vision fund was. I guess built and put in place about eight years, six years ago, six or seven years ago.
This is my sixth year, I would say seven or eight.
So, and it was put in place specifically to, to further fund. School-wide missions, things in one of the, I guess it was at the top, and one of the reasons that we do it this way, we have to receive a formal proposal from somebody in the building, that goes through the leadership team of the school. And then that proposal is considered by us to spend these allocated funds and we have forty-three thousand dollars.
How much?
Forty-three, four fifty.
Forty-three, four fifty in that account and if you're to further building wide projects for either literacy and or learning and usually all these years, and would you like to tell us a little bit about this?
Yeah, so. Lydia, and, and there's a teacher spearheading the literacy festival this year, so it's a lot of time working to burners and area. Authors and guest artists as we call them, but they're storytellers, so we're going to do the local. And then a story coach, storyteller coach to Jelly, and then there's also Vermont author Natalie Kinsey Warnock. They're going to come in. Spring and do different work with each of our classes preschool all the way up through twelfth grade. Different pieces of the schedules built where they'll come in and write up stories and things like that. Just looking at, really the lens for this one is looking that everybody has a story to tell, everybody's story is different and unique and how can they show that, and so each of these artists represent that for themselves and so they're going to be able to bring that to our school. We're really excited, we had, we originally had Jeff and Natalie and we were able to get Jelly as well. So, I think it's the year before, but it's been a very long time before me, so. Yeah, it's, it's a very, very cool, it's a creativity thing that we do. For every year, like, so we do the arts festival, I mean, after the year, so this is.
What is a poetry slam?
Poetry slam is where people will get up and share usually their original poetry. If you, like in a bigger city, you could go to like a coffee bar or something like that and share it on an open mic and just share what you've written.
Locking up the mic, Nick.
Historically.
That's, yeah, I mean, that's what that is typically.
From what I, depending, I'm sure these things evolve over the years, a poetry slam could also be like, who had the best poem and people like cheering, things that nature, just to try to be able to see who had the best response, things that nature, so that's kind of the idea behind it.
Yeah, sometimes it's like something you pre-read, sometimes it's something that you're going to like go and free, yeah, right, right there.
Yeah.
I think at the VSDA conference, we watched the poetry slam at the very end, but it wasn't a very, very end, it was a bunch of students talking about various things, we've already been catching this, about forty kids, they just took turns rapid firing things, it was real, really, really visceral. So, it's, I think there's a possibility of it to be, to be six of them, yeah, and I'm interested in coming and there's always a community aspect of these, they open the doors for people, you guys want to come in there.
Absolutely. So we're hoping you would approve the seven thousand dollars to bring these three artists in for that.
So, we have a proposal here, just going through the proper channels, to approve seven thousand dollars from the mission and vision fund for the purpose of literacy. And it's for the worth consideration. This is in the spring.
This is in the spring, yes.
Do you foresee any other mission and vision requests coming?
No, I think typically this is the main one that we do is the literacy and arts festival each year, so. Don't, nothing that I can think of right now.
I'll make a motion that we approve the amount of seven thousand dollars out of the mission and vision funding account. For the proposal as written.
To approve the seven thousand dollars from mission and vision fund as it was in here in this, in this, in this request. That's right, we're motion, we're gonna wait a second. I have a motion in a second, to approve the seven thousand dollars, is there any further discussion?
One side note, just to consider, not right now, but moving forward, we want to ask the town at some point to move that. Do you want to continue this on or ask the town to move it into their capital or unrestricted? Like, for future.
The mission and vision money?
Yeah.
I, so the mission and vision money is specific to a couple of purposes.
I was just saying, will we ever want to go back to the town to ask to move that money into our unrestricted or our capital fund? Or do we, do we, is this set where we have to use it for that, or, I'm in favor of approving this today, but more so for the future with this whole fund, would we need to go back to the town to? Ask them to move, it's a small amount of money.
If you, if, if, so forty-three thousand, four hundred minus seven thousand, thirty-six thousand dollars, and if you decided that you needed that more pressingly.
Right.
To move for something building related, let's say. You could only do that as a, as a move to move the money out and close that fund and then similar to the year you came on when we had to ask them to use the special life money for the special life, but that was a special line item, so it would be an article on the warning.
Right.
So, so the, this fund though, this isn't like a separately funded thing like so many.
No, this is not, this, this has no outside funding, this is money set aside six years ago.
Alright, and so we're going to burn this down, essentially with every literacy and arts festival.
Unless we build it back in.
Unless we top it back up within the next. Six years, okay.
And to top it back up, we have to separately, we, we would say, our mission and vision fund is down, can we move fourteen thousand dollars back, let's put it back at fifty thousand dollars.
Or you end it at that time, right, yeah.
Yeah, and the challenging piece about it, maybe it would be, it would end this type of experience, and we wouldn't.
Right, but right now, it's, to a degree, it's extra budgetary, this is extra budgetary money put aside in the time when, when taxes were black, so that you could.
We had an amount left over and it was a certain percentage to go here and a certain percentage. So, if that money wasn't available, this would probably be the first thing I'll chop and block. So, by having, having this, this fund, it allows things like this to happen, so.
In the years before, the, the years before this existed, this money was asked and fundraised by tenants, and so you would try to come up with. Four thousand dollars or seven thousand dollars to sort of do this, and it was just a bit of a strain, and so they just.
Big sales and gift wrap and popcorn.
Yeah, yeah, it's not at all about the value of it, it's more.
This is about what, at some point, what are your priorities, right, and if your priorities are. Be more immediate, that's, that's would be. So, we would, we have to plan for that.
Right, meaning at this time, meaning when we want to move the remainder and ask the town to move the remainder into that, the capital fund or the unrestricted fund at this town meeting would be the question, I guess, or to continue doing what we do and run the fund until we can. No longer, I make a decision then. One of those tough decisions about, right, about priorities, whether. We're putting the money into the literacy and arts festivals or whether we're putting it into the building.
Yeah, sure, we could, so that question, you want to discuss that at the next meeting?
I'm just putting it out there to everybody, whether we wanted to have that discussion or not, or are we all on board with keeping it at as is and.
So, a related discussion we had in the last meeting was we've spoken about, with Mike more specifically, moving a lot of our unrestricted funds or some of them to capital. So that we would, that's one thing we're already going to be asking in this, in, in this next one, articles, is taking something unrestricted and putting it in the capital because the unrestricted is. Used for anything, but for the capital, then you know you have it dedicated to it.
I don't know if we have to do that necessarily, because if it's unrestricted, we can.
I think that Mike's advice to us was, don't show unrestricted money just sitting, so try to minimize. You want to, you want, you don't want to show that, it's a big red flag, so you would move it only because you want to remove the red flag.
And, and the beauty of restricted, unrestricted provides flexibility, you're spot on, well, but restricted is exactly that, you put it in for these purposes, it can only be used for that purposes, then you'd only vote to get it out of that purpose. Once it's in that reserve, capital, and so special mission, whatever, it's, you can't touch it.
Right, so on that Mike's advice is if you show that, then, then there might, they might legislate that all unrestricted reserves get spent there.
Over a certain percentage or something.
That's the fear, so we may move some of it over, if, if that, and that may be the prudent thing to do. And with this one, I don't know, if you want to discuss that.
Yeah, more of whether we want to discuss moving that or do we want to keep it in there, it's not a huge amount, to be honest, it's not like it's going to make a huge. Difference with the, with the capital project, but it's more, again, kind of focusing on priorities and where we need to focus.
And to get a bigger bank of the buck, we could discuss, if it is capital, as an example of moving these funds, we could get a separate bank account that would yield a better interest rate, because that's only one district that we manage, Peachum actually does that scenario, everyone else keeps it unrestricted. And the general operating with the investment account, which is not a bad interest rate, it's just, we could potentially get a better rate and get income added to that annually. Well, especially if we know, like, you know, this mission and vision is something that we're only pulling once a year out of for arts and literacy, there's no point to not put that into something that's way higher yield, way less liquid.
So.
Type of thing, but that's, that's a.
Short term, can I move this discussion to upcoming agenda items? So let's discuss this again, upcoming agenda items?
It was a presentation by Assistant Principal Jeremy Ricker, and he had this, if we can come up with. You can come up with. That proposal or something like that, maybe it's back in the minutes or something, then we could read it and what it was, what it was for, I think he came from Hyde Park and this, it was all details and. But if we're voting to, if we would vote tonight on. Do we put this in the capital, tonight I would vote no.
I would also vote no, but it's.
But everything needs to be considered.
Yeah, but I'm happy to consider it, I think that, I think that we, if we move it into the upcoming agenda, we'll consider what we need to move into capital. And whether, whether it's fair to get all the money into capital or some of the money into capital, but. You know, from, on a year-to-year basis.
And with that as an agenda item, that would give Mike more time and myself more time to get all the funds, the, the updated balances for you and latest conversations from the Commission on Education, what their thoughts are on working capital amounts and.
Because that's five more years of seven thousand dollars.
Yeah, seven thousand is the highest it's been, I think.
This is a very, I actually.
It's, it varies for what the artist charges, so the price on the back.
Well, last, last year this played for Jack Hulley, the, the drum band and the dancers, and it's a very fun thing that happens all weekend, I think it was forty-two hundred.
Yeah.
It was, it was, yeah.
That's great.
I think it would be to Mike's point, I was thinking about that too with investments and not, I don't know where you're putting it, but if it's CDs or what, but if, I think that is important to consider too at some point with how we're planning ahead and where we're putting, if it's the capital fund money or whatever, if we can look at some options with that, I think that would be a smart.
Yeah.
Move for sure.
The only thing that can say that we manage really well from a yield, the interest rate and market returns is the two endowments, the seventy fund.
Yeah.
And then the, the, the endowment, the Danville endowment, all, everything else, all that unrestricted, it's sitting and it's earning money, we get it, we get a healthy interest income, but it's all in the general fund.
Yeah.
All that interest income doesn't, doesn't, it doesn't help the capital fund or the special fund itself.
It doesn't build that, it doesn't build the fund itself, yeah.
But it is helping our interest, the interest income line on the, on the local budget for revenue, yeah, absolutely, we're doing great.
What kind of account, what do you have that money in, in the general fund?
Oh, Peachum.
Or the general fund, what is the current account?
What is the, what is the Danville?
So it's an investment account.
And it's an investment account.
Right, like, like, just for example, just to give you some background, in years past, with the good working capital with.
Can I?
Yeah, it's like sixty thousand.
Yeah. Because. We're, we're way off the topic of this proposal and it would be better, I, I think we can talk to this later, and then in the meantime, I'd like to vote on this one, that we have a motion and a second on, the seven thousand dollars from the mission and vision fund. For these artists, for the literacy. I would call the question, all in favor of this seven thousand dollar expenditure for mission.
Aye.
Are you opposed?
I'm not opposed, I might abstain, can I do that?
You gotta write it down, if you want to abstain, you gotta write it down. Okay, motion kicks. Now we're going to move on to the FY twenty-six budget and, Mike, I'm hoping that you can start us with a brief recap of where we worked and really specifically, the recap on the proposal that we're looking at and the spending. Yep, and where we are on the spending and what we have. Private cuts. So.
Get your emails up and I.
Yep. Alright, these screens not shared yet, right? Did you share that?
He's just sharing it through the.
He's right here, right now, it's real time.
I can't, I can't record it, he's on a separate machine, unless you want to go, because I haven't been able to log on to that.
So I need to get this up for the meeting, so we gotta, can you, can you make him a co-host?
He's, he's got to log into the.
Yep, I can. On the meeting in there.
Okay.
So, everybody who's not, all the people who don't exist that aren't here specifically, the newspaper reporter in four days, just bear with us for a second.
Put it on there, minute, minute to the meeting.
Recording in progress.
You've been promoted.
Make sure your mic's off too, Mike.
Yeah, you gotta mute yourself.
It'll take longer than doing anything else. That's good. Mike, we'll have to accept that you've been promoted if you ever had a chance, yeah, hope you got it, okay, Mike?
I think.
Yep, you did, you're good.
Correct. Sure.
Yeah.
Should be, sure. Multiple panels can go with it.
Okay. So, the last time I presented the budget to you, it was a little bit lower. It was about seven thousand dollars lower. Then I'm going to show you now, that is because there is an ask that you want to discuss. It's changing the FTE statuses of two people or two positions, I should say, let's stick with positions and not names, so, Sarah, why don't you? And then I can talk about the cost of.
Um, so, we would like to request two different positions, the first position is our school clinician. They are currently a point six position, so they're here three full days a week, and then it's a shared position with water for school. I'm going to read what Natalie and I wrote up, so the increase in the school-based clinician role is a very necessary role for Danville, as a pre-K twelve school serving over three hundred students, the demand for mental health support is real, additionally, our region's resources are exhausted and families experience long waitlist times to access mental, mental health and counseling support for their children. Having a school-based clinician on staff has been essential to our students' success and having that person full-time would greatly benefit our students and overall operation of the school, this is a minimal cost increase for us that would benefit a large number of students. Due to having someone part-time, right now we are forced to choose between one child's mental health needs and another's, making this position full-time allows us to offer mental, mental health support to. To our students who need it the most, so there's that ask, and then the second ask is, at the high school level, it's a corner position, so. So that person currently is point eight, they are here every single day. Um, but they started like ten thirty or something like that, um, and so it would be increasing that um, position to a one point O as well. Um, so the culinary tradition currently serves both middle and high school students and will continue to do so. Middle schoolers receive an introduction to baking and cooking and learning night skills and how to use basic kitchen equipment. High school students can enroll in classes that teach home economics and advanced cooking topics. I would, uh, Natalie would also like to include home economics within our aspire program and special education. We are not currently able to do that with this position being a point eight. The current point A position means that we can only offer culinary classes four periods a day. Expanding to operate five periods a day of instruction daily is necessary as a demand for flexible pathways to meet graduation requirements. Remains a mandate from the state of Vermont, and there is a demand from students which is hard to meet with limited schedule and options.
Sarah, what's it required in this from the state?
The, it's the flexible pathways, flexible pathways, yes. So, that's, Natalie and I picked it up, she wanted to make sure. We, we feel that both positions are very essential and are hoping to be able to do, have the increase for both. If we can't, we have some thought, but I'd love to see.
Want to expand on the first position, the, the permission, that she currently works for the S U full-time?
Yeah, so this, that position's currently full-time, point six, us, point for Waterford. And Waterford has said that if our board agrees, they would give us that other point four because they know we have that need, so.
And they would, nothing they don't have a need, but they would try to figure it out in a different way if that made sense for the school as well as for that employee.
So.
Can I ask a painfully ignorant question? Um, what is a clinician and what does that have to do with mental health?
Therapist, like a therapist. Like you, or counselor that you go to, like outside.
Okay.
You can't find them outside either, that's the problem.
Not, so not a psychiatrist, not a, not a nurse practitioner, not a psychoanalyst.
Like a therapist.
A licensed therapist.
Or the teaching, they have a license of some sort.
They have a clinical, I think it's a clinical social work, I have to look at the letters after, I mean. But yes, they're licensed. So they even have lots of different licenses, so yeah, so it's like if you go to go get therapy outside, it's a very different role than a school counselor. Um, in that, in that they're training to conduct like actual therapeutic sessions.
And it's not the guidance, it's not the guidance counselor, it's in addition to.
Right, yeah, yeah, so this, this is essentially providing there, like actual.
In this school, yeah, we, this first.
Which is statement, right, is this, is this statement dated or is this?
Good question, there is a mandate to.
Increase your social emotional support in schools.
Hands per V Q S, there's a push there.
Yeah, are students using the talk therapy, is it through the S U, accessing that, is that going well or?
You're asking a good question, they are accessing, but not very high numbers and.
It'd be thirteen to act.
But you're right, this is. Correct, um, there, what we have found is that people who access it, repeat, use it and have high satisfaction with it. But the number of people accessing it, um, it's not as high as global default, so it's a nice resource to have available.
Is our, is our clinician backlog predominantly under thirteen?
We have a large portion of their case of is.
You also have to consider that it's great that we have that option online for people, that's for adults that work for us as well as for students. Um, but it's, um, some people want somebody to talk to and some people wanna just talk to somebody on the phone and not have that. Um, more intimate environment, so it works, I think it serves two different purposes. Um, it is more of a traditional role to be able to work with somebody in a one-on-one environment. And to be able to share what's troubling you and be able to have somebody look you in the eye and be able to try to talk you through and help support you in whatever support you happen to need. The talk space is one more tool, but it's probably, like I said, there's a high satisfaction rate with it. But people are, not as many people are choosing to engage with it as somebody that's on site.
Yes, and that person's been um, been here for six years. And add a waitlist every single year, and you have to choose every single year of which kids.
So, going back to getting caught up on where we, where we stand, this is, this is new information, previous information that we had. Was we were gonna cut four special ed of paras, we were not gonna backfill three teaching positions. And in our spending, we were going to anticipate students. And then additionally, we were going to, there's this proposal that you have still include giving back a hundred fifty thousand dollars unrestricted.
No, you said, you said Mike, get it out of there.
This was in our, it was in the media package from last month.
Seventy even, or is it, no, it's like seventy, well, I could.
It's like seventy two.
So this increase that you're talking about tonight with these, this new information, none of that other stuff changes, right?
Changed.
So this new information is point four F T E and the benefits and then point two F T E and then adding benefits?
Well, it's just, it's just.
It's all in there.
It's the point, so to be clear, the point four position, the mental health position, comes with comp and ben. Currently, Waterford has, Waterford gives it all to Danville now, that's going up by. Should I say, you know, point four, when I wanna give, I, I know what, whatever it's. In total, between the point four and the point two, the comp and ben load increase is low seventies, like seventy one, seventy.
So the, the money proposals that we're gonna look at, taking out the one fifty uh, on the gift back, is seventy thousand dollars in spending higher.
Correct, and this was just based on, as we made our staff decisions earlier, it was based on what we thought our student needs, servicing students. And what we're saying here is that we could serve students better in the culinary arts as well as being able to meet their mental health needs, so.
And Natalie and I worked hard too to make sure that there were no other increases that we could control in the budget. So there's nothing that we asked Mike to increase in our, in the local budget that we can impact.
And all we're doing is trying to provide information to you folks, you guys can, you guys can ultimately make the decision. But we wanna make sure that you guys have the information and, and are able to make the decisions based on what the school feels the most important. Needs right now that may even met.
And where we stopped last month, we did not have the December first letter, we didn't have the yield, we didn't know the C L A, we didn't know how to form the.
Correct. And I wanted to have a G D N.
Right, and the A D N, so would you like to walk us through a lot of that real quick, so we can have better inform ourselves?
Is it possible to know that breakout because it's, it's a point six.
Yep.
Addition.
So.
It seems like a one point O addition.
Yeah, so, so.
There's the numbers.
So mental health?
Yeah.
Mental health, it, it's uh, it's going up.
Percentages are fine too, Mike.
Yeah, no, it's, so it's thirty one, one eighty five, that's the common ben load, thirty one, one eighty five. I don't know why the formula is stuck like that, I just, I just went into it and I can see it, that's thirty one, one eighty five, that's an exact number of cop and ben look.
Okay, and the.
And the point two?
Yeah, the point two is forty?
Nope, the point four, mental health is thirty one, one eighty five.
But to get the seventy something, you're leaving forty thousand.
The delta is on the point two, and the reason why is, is that individual. Correct, and I have to assume.
You have to say it.
The worst-case scenario, which would be a family plan.
We're anticipating that the person who has a point eight now, when they go to one point O, would then opt into the health insurance. Cause that person has not currently opted into the health insurance, so he's assuming that, but you didn't say this out loud.
Sorry, I wanna be conservative.
Yeah, so, well, he's anticipating in the budget, that, that, that person might opt into the health benefits.
And maybe the reason why they haven't been in the past is because they're a point eight and it's.
At point eight, they're.
It's very expensive to get benefits if you're not full-time.
Yes, it is.
Very expensive.
Is it? Is it a need that we need the full-time hours or that we wanna keep this person? And give them a full-time job and benefits and that's a way to keep them in the position, meaning like, do they want a full-time job and benefits?
Which position?
The culinary, the culinary, which that's a valid, both are valid.
I don't know that I can answer that question.
Yes.
Cause what I was thinking, this is where I was going with it, is if, again, again, it's a very personal thing for whoever this person is. Um, but can we share that position with, say, Twinfield and that culinary person travels or. Or Peachum or whatever, you know, I guess that's, when I think about sustainability, that's kind of where I'm going with. How do we share some of our resources, so it, it's, maybe kids aren't traveling, but potentially staff are traveling. And again, this is another.
So.
But.
But if we're gonna, if we wanna further the discussion about the specifics of a person, and we wanna do that and we wanna not put that person at.
Right.
At a disadvantage or talk about a contract.
But we shouldn't also make a decision based on a individual person's desires or.
Discussion, we should do this, not, we should stop the, stop the recording during the executive session.
Let me dig my, let me dig my thing out.
So real specifically, I think that. So let me just read, let me just read you one V S A three one three A one, one V S A three A one. Three one three A one says, topics requiring a specific finding of premature general public knowledge. We clearly place the public body or person involved at a substantial disadvantage and they include um, labor relations agreements with employees.
Yeah.
And contracts.
Yeah.
And, and so you should, you should do it in an executive session, and so to do that first, I would need for someone to move. That to find the premature general public knowledge regarding the superintendent's or, or someone, the teacher's contract clearly places the board at a substantial disadvantage. Because the board risks disclosing its negotiation strategy for discussing the, the person's contract to public.
Let's use this as two items.
I mean, the same executive session, but for two items.
For two, you, the same executive session for two specific contracts. There are two contracts in question here that were not previously budgeted and without, so, so, would you agree that premature public knowledge. Regarding these contracts might place the board at a substantial disadvantage?
I'm not sure I can. Yeah, no. This is, we're not negotiating.
If you, so, would you, would you want to enter an executive session to talk about some further specific details about?
Yes.
I think it's more the individual protecting there.
So I think that if we, if, if, that if we make a motion, it's one V S A three one three A one. And it specifically is to move to enter an executive session for the purpose of discussing. Let's say, one V S A three one three A three, which is the employment.
Yep.
Of a per public officer or employee. Let us do one V, and it takes one motion, so I would look for motion that says one V S A three one three. A one, A three, the employment of a public officer or employee.
A one, A three?
No, just, just, just three one three A three, yeah, I get hung up on the one, the one is usually all.
I moved through V S A, one V S A is three one three A three.
So I have a motion to go into. Seven sixteen right now, but we're not in it yet, so somebody seconds the motion. I have a second for the motion, so we've motioned to go into an executive session real quick here.
I'll like, resume recording, re-recording.
And so, um, we were asked by administration whether we wanna consider these two updates. And what are the board's thoughts?
We look at the, now, now look at Mike's.
Okay.
Now, now that we sort of know all the ins and outs.
So do you wanna, do you wanna look at it without the seventy thousand?
No, it's starting to start with.
You have the previous version.
Yeah, we already, we are looking.
It's the last, the last version I said has, without it.
Just, it has the spending, not the tax effect.
Yes. Well, actually, that's not true, it had the spending, it's not, you're right, because I didn't have any of the.
Right, that's what I mean.
Yes.
Tonight is the tax effect.
Okay, so I'm gonna take this out, because this is just a better temporary, I put it in to see what the impact would be. So right now, based on the ask and this really big footnote, which I believe you. And I, and I'm, I'm just getting validation from my business manager, but I took delivery and. That you were correct, you're correct, so I'm saying it's already been adjusted, I had, the mistake I had made for the record. Is that I took this yield, because that's how it's instructed, all the readings, all the materials, all the training, everything said, you take your yield rate. You adjust it by the statewide average to get what, what's called the statewide adjusted property yield, let me blow the stuff, so nobody's going blind like me. That's how we instructed every material I've read in the last ninety days, said that's how. There we go, okay, sorry, all right. Not that I want everyone to get caught up in the mathematics of the formula, but this is how we were taught and instructed. Take the yield rate they give you. Multiply it times a statewide average C L A adjustment to get the statewide adjusted property yield. And by the way, when they gave us this number. It didn't say that, there was a paragraph in the letter that said it, but it's, it's, it's the same product that comes out every year in a letter. And it gives you the yield rate, it gave me this rate, so I was comparing the rates over the previous years, everything was the same. So I thought I had to do the calculation myself, if I had read, go ahead, sorry.
I have a clarifying question, in the past years that we've been involved in this, there's a separate letter that comes out that gives you the C L A. And what I was looking at today was a document that, I don't know if you have it in front of you, but it didn't get shared with the board yet, cause it came in, I think, today. And it was, there's now two C L A's.
So time out, I'm not there yet, but yes, I'm talking about that.
Right.
You are correct, and we'll get there in two seconds, I'm just talking about the yield rate, cause that was causing major problems. Which made me not wanna come here tonight. You won't even wanna know what the, why, we referenced how much it would be.
I was up at three in the morning over it, but.
It was heartbreaking, okay, so I'm feeling a lot better right now, and I'm just gonna validate that with the business manager, so thank you, Eric, for setting me straight. This, ignore the yellow, I've fixed everything, so now we're using this as the yield rate.
Which came from the December letter, that number we just.
Yes, and then if you read the entire letter, it says that the yield rate's already been adjusted. Anyway, let's keep moving, so this is the per pupil, long-term weighted average A D M spend, that's the penalty. Good news is, you're not in the penalty, I wish I could set it up on all my districts. So that is the pre-C L A tax rate, as of right now, you have to calculate it, hold on. Now we'll talk about your C L A, cause that's what you were absolutely spot on. As part of what we were educated on how to do this and present it, you take the C L A they give you. Then you have to use the statewide average C L A adjustment to get. A statewide adjusted C L A, this divided by this is that, that's simple.
So what's noteworthy here, Mike, also is that last year's C L A was point eight five five nine. This year, our C L A is point seven three one zero. And so if it weren't for this adjustment that's being made here, we would again get crushed at the end by the C L A. But because they're adjusting the C L A statewide to sort of factor in how costs are shifted across the state. It doesn't penalize the small towns as much for big sales.
Yeah, and for the record, if, if this, if you wanna know what the real yield rate was gonna be, it was eleven something. If you take this and divide it by seventy two, you're gonna get eleven something, so. This whole point, the reason why they're doing what they're doing is to make these two rates incredibly comparable. They wanna take the emotion, which has driven people insane, that they're all sitting on unrealized gains. On every one of their homes and every one of the neighborhoods, because the state's saying, oh yeah. Boy, the home values have really gone up in your area, we're gonna keep dropping that C L A to reflect what the market rate is. Cause your homestead value that you get on your property tax bill doesn't reflect the constant movement, it just reflects what you bought it at. Then the grand list gets affected, and that's how your C L A gets affected, when they look at sample sizes of what's sold every year. Where I'm going with this is, this is just math, they're, they're doing this, they're, they're adjusting this rate. Which is adjusted here, but it really was eleven something, by that statewide average C L A adjustment to get a, an adjusted. I should actually rename this statewide adjusted property yield, that should go up here now, that should be the new title, cause that is adjusted. But I can't, they said, don't do that, because this is not adjusted, and that is not adjusted. So if I really wanna do it right, I guess I could re, reverse engineer, put the eleven in here, this drops down to here, and I could keep my formula, everything the same. I could do that, that might be the way to do it, so you can compare across three years, what was the true yield versus the statewide adjusted. That may, maybe that's what I do, it's not a bad idea, I just thought of that, anyway, um, so that's your pre-C L A tax rate. Then you have to adjust. Then you have to adjust your CLA to the one oh two, that's your new homestead tax rate. So we would be up three cents if you were to vote yes on the ask. Let's pause. If you use a hundred and fifty thousand, you actually would show of the unrestricted reserve, and I'll plug it in so you can see it. Which is on the table as a possibility. Look what happens. You show a penny reduction. And your reserve would go down from six fifty to five hundred.
Can you go up, what's our, what's our top, top five number there?
Sorry.
Yeah.
Seven, six, eight, four.
That's the spending needs.
That's because I just put the one fifty in here, so if you wanna compare the math on the expense side, this, I'm gonna guess this was eighty-five twenty something.
It was eighty-five, twenty-one, nine fifteen.
Previously, and then I added a hundred and fifty to the revenue number, cause I just add the carry forward for the reserve. Okay, so that went up by a hundred and fifty, so that drops. The delta would be like an eighty thousand dollars, and this should be, this original number is like seventy-six oh four three hundred or something like that, I had a guess. It's on the. I'm just doing the math, we're doing the extra, the extra seventy something minus the hundred and fifty revenue is about an eighty thousand dollar adder.
And either way, with the one fifty in, with the one fifty out, this represents a reduction in forces, reduction in staffing of four pairs. Three point four, and then three other full-time positions that went back.
To be clear, the net of the local budget is two point four, three minus zero point six add back. So it's a two point four FTE at the local level here, hold on.
That's not true.
Hold on.
You forgot the three that we didn't back though.
That's in here, that's how I'm trying to get Paris, Paris are not here, they're at the SU level, you don't get FTE credit for that.
No, you, you, you're misunderstanding what I'm saying. You are, there, there are gonna be four less pairs in Danville.
Three less.
Three less, three less, three less pairs and a special educator in Danville in the building working.
In the building, understand.
And they do, they do go backwards.
Through the assessments, yes, but not as an FTE.
Right.
But they sit at the SU level.
Yes, but there are employees that work.
I don't disagree, and that's all I, I just meant.
I'm saying that out loud.
Uh, uh, okay. Correct.
This is what I'm, I'm saying out loud, there will be four less pairs and special education in the building. There will also not be three positions filled that we had budgeted for last year.
So then.
So that's a total reduction of seven employees in this building, then you're asking back four point six employees.
Six point four.
And so more than six individuals are not in this budget that were in last year's budget.
Fair enough.
That's.
And this one that you have now does reflect the seventy thousand dollar increase.
Cause the, yeah.
And, and the six.
The point four and the point.
Six FTE that coincide with that.
If we can call it a point four and a point two, then it makes it a little easier. So a point four add and a point two add that we're adding on. But it's, this, we talked about earlier is, is one of the reasons that this, that we're getting close to level, or that we are, or, or we get potentially go under. Is because we have reduced the number of people in the building. So we've reduced it, we've reduced it in parents, and we've reduced it in teachers that we plan to hire.
Yes, so when we're looking at just our budgeted expenditures, the eighty-three and the eighty-five, we've got almost, you know, also a three and a half percent increase. This is with the, all the changes made, plus the point four and point two added in there. And if we think of, one way to think about it is, if you look at like cost of living adjustment was like around three percent as of last January. Who knows what it will be this January, but you've been kind of. If we were looking at this in a systemic way, that we wanna stay in line with inflation and, and the cost of living adjustment, you could justify that reasonably, I think. With, with, with last year's COLA.
I, I would like to see what COLA numbers you're looking at, cause this, the, the National Federal Inflationary Index that I'm looking at shows a much higher.
This was a social security, three point two percent of social security, so what was the one you had?
Um, the National Labor Bureau Statistics or something, I, I have to, I have to check, but.
Yeah, it's okay.
It's, it's, it's definitely high, the trend is higher.
Twenty-three was eight percent, two thousand twenty-three was eight percent.
Right.
And then two thousand twenty-four was three point two.
So it dropped.
So it dropped, and this year will probably be, if we're not gonna get it, that eight was like unprecedented, that was huge. So I think we're making up for that with the negotiations, you're trying to catch up to that eight percent that happened in two thousand twenty-three. But I, I think, if, if someone is looking at that and we say to the town, this is around what COLA was in January of two thousand twenty-four. You can justify it in that sense, uh, cause some people do look at the actual budget and not just a tax impact. They'll say, you know, they'll look at and compare and say, oh, this was more this year, why are we not level funded, you know, I think.
Talk about the cost drivers as well.
Right, right.
Cause we actually have fewer bodies here, which we've talked about.
Right.
Two bodies are helping offset the CBA estimations, both at the support staff level and at the teacher level. Cause we have to, had to make an assumption of what we thought we would land, it's overcoming that, and it's, it's overcoming the healthcare of four point nine.
One of the other things we always get asked about, or at least I do, is staff to student ratio.
Right.
And less people in the building means a higher, a, a different ratio, a higher ratio. I, I, well, I think that what we're showing with this is that. There are less, less people gonna work here, to try to go with roughly the same number of kids.
Right.
Yeah.
Can you scroll down again, Mike? Let's look at the final.
Yeah.
So, and then, so this is your, this is for the residential.
Yeah.
But then I also show, I, I've kind of changed the format this year to be more sequential and, and group things together. Then we have the household income percentage, how, how we calculate that for those that are in the income sensitive range, okay? And then I've got the non-resident down here, I gotta fix that, there's a poor little problem, don't look at that. So. Sorry. Anyway, exactly, uh, but I mean, look, we, we talked about the increase and decrease in Ed spending. The twenty-four budget was up seven twenty-eight from fiscal twenty-three, it's a lot. A million last year. Essentially flat.
That's with the one fifty, with the one fifty give back.
Sorry, it includes the one fifty carry.
Which is, which is fine, which is fine, this is the money, this is some of the money last year for the positions that didn't get filled. And this is, this is what you're showing to the town, saying, we are trying to keep this level.
Right.
Yes, and this is back a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of the, of the excess that we, that we gained from, really from twenty-three and up from twenty-four.
Well said.
So, uh, it's also noteworthy that just the, um, the, the high number is no longer one thirty-seven five hundred to be in the top tier, it's now one twenty-eight.
It's even gotten worse, I just got released, this happened Monday.
So income sensitivity, there's a, there's a high threshold, and it was a hundred and thirty-seven thousand five hundred, and so last year they moved it down to.
Oh, wow.
It's, it's, it's been dropping steady for five years now.
Yeah.
So more and more people are becoming, uh, uh, no, are, 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 are not becoming.
Are being taken off the income sensitivity.
Please work.
Yeah.
Okay, this is important.
We can drag it down.
Alright, alright, alright.
Oh, yeah.
It's been a steady drop since twenty twenty. The state is basically reducing the threshold of income sensitivity. So more and more people are gonna be paying the rate, but the rate we're gonna put in front of the, the residents, which is the dollar sixty-nine, dollar seventy, go ahead.
In any of those, none of the other numbers changed, forty-seven, sixty, ninety, none of those changed for the income sensitivity thresholds, just the top tier.
So those are mine, I put those in there, and the reason why I put these specific numbers is to show ranges. Forty-seven thousand is the threshold where you don't even pay the income sensitive rate, you pay a flat two percent.
Yeah, forty-seven thousand.
Anything less than forty-seven, it's a flat two percent, so you had to calculate it, and you said forty-seven thousand times two percent. It doesn't matter if your home's worth fifty thousand or four hundred thousand, you're only paying two percent of your income, doesn't matter.
Except when it's worth more than four hundred thousand.
Well, right, correct, that's why I have it in the gray box, and then, that's right, delineate that. Then, once you get to forty-seven, you pay this income sensitive rate, which I had on the previous page, which I walked you through all accounts.
What's that number, two point four?
To, right now, the income sensitive rate for next year, if, if you were to push this budget in front of the constituents and say you'd vote on it. Two point four percent, how you get there is you take the cost per student, right? Divided by the income yield, gets you this factor of sensitivity, you multiply it times two percent, and that becomes, uh, your income sensitive rate.
I thought we showed it to him last year, two seventy-seven, but we showed it to him last year, two eighty-five.
It was two eighty-five. Yep.
Cause that, so that is reduced, so if you make between sixty and ninety thousand dollars, that is all for.
So let's go back.
Mike, in your report for the town, the town report, could you specify that the state made this change, that some people are bummed off? And are we paying fully on their property taxes, and they're not gonna get the income credit anymore?
What, what I like to do is provide this, what I normally provide every year, and they should see, and, and if you want, we'll.
Yeah, I'm just trying to.
Keep moving.
You're trying to provide as much information as possible.
Yeah, someone will see their, their rates go up and think.
Why, nobody told me, why is it different?
That they.
I'll give this table, I'll give this table, I hope this spells it out.
Yeah, and that, like, changes.
They can see the trend, they'll see the one fifteen, and then I put fiscal twenty-five in here, and I use the one twenty-eight, which ties back to the table, and then down, I'll just.
Yeah.
It will hopefully people, it'll figure it out.
Yeah.
But this is an important thing to know, because more and more people.
Are gonna be.
Are gonna now start paying.
Right.
The full rate, the full month.
Right, the state is finding more people to pay for the full rate of that.
Yeah.
Right.
By dropping that number.
Yeah. And that has not been talked about in anything I've read, so that's, like, that's really publicized.
Know that it had gone down like that, I thought it was a pretty static.
That's big, that's a big for those people in that bracket.
Right here, this, this is twenty-three thousand dropped since twenty twenty, last time you, it's dropped twenty-three thousand. Right, one thirty-eight five hundred from twenty twenty.
That's probably, it's, it's just a problem for those people.
For a lot of people, yeah, especially in this inflationary environment we're in.
Mike, can you go back to the, the original tax impact there and take out that, that one fifty again?
Yep, it would be a three second, and I'm happy to take it out, yep. Did you remove this, Eric?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, and then go back to tax rate?
Yes. And then, and then can we remove the, the, the seventy, the seventy something? As well, just so that we would have all the numbers here. I mean, I know that there's still.
No, you're asking, that's why we have this, so you can see it.
This, this yield rate will change four other times before.
Well, I just read it, uh, something this evening, that, that the governor has a proposal to, to drop, to, to try to make the statewide rate go down to three percent instead of six percent, which you, which you, which you said. And then there's, there's something coming from the House that says we can get it down to zero, but it's still the same. So all that's gonna affect us positively if any of that happens, but like you said, that yield rate changes a lot.
I mean, I believe in magic, it's a good song.
Sorry, it's seventy-six thousand, not seventy-two, so hold on one second, sorry. I thought it was seventy, it's seventy, I just validated that.
And who knows what will happen this year, the legislature is gonna get on.
Weird stuff, just, do, I mean, and, and by minute by minute, just before we came here, it's just quite.
Yeah, it's been a late, yeah.
It, it, it's right back of the napkin, feels like, coming from the state.
So, cause I think there's, well, the AOs also struggle because key people have left, and some people have come out of retirement. To do this job, just give us the information, literally, the guy, guy worked thirty years, Brad James worked thirty years, he retired. Tried to retire, trained somebody for a full year, that somebody just left. So now he can't. And you can't make this stuff up, okay, so it's, it's one seventy-one, which is basically flat.
It's a penny?
A penny.
Yeah.
So that is.
So I didn't, took the revenue, the unrestricted surplus, took that out of the revenue equation. And we took out the seventy, seventy-six thousand for the, for the two positions, a point four and a point two increases. So it's essentially, but you thought it was a reduction, I think.
With the one fifty, it's a reduction.
Right.
So if you actually put the one fifty back in, it's a three point.
Yeah, what happens when, when you add it in now, with, with what?
It's gonna be about three cents.
It's, yeah, it's a three cent problem.
He didn't know, he didn't know about the, the additional personnel.
I know that, that's why I didn't wanna muddy the waters, when he said something like, he doesn't even know about the new ask, I'm like, forget it. I will do it tonight all at once.
Okay, yeah, so, so essentially that, that, that position's two cents to the tax rate.
The two positions.
Those two possessions are two cents to the tax.
That's a great way to look at it.
It's a great way to look at it. The incremental point six, total FTE, fully loaded, is two cents to the tax rate.
I mean, the other, the other thing that we could do is buy down those positions, instead of one fifty, we buy down.
Right.
Or buy, buy that, or do seventy-six, so we still have more in the capital fund, and then that way it's a, it's a level set.
I just like your, what are you guys' thoughts as you're looking at this right now with the impact for, as, as this is a budget right now?
It, it, just, just to be clear, before you answer that question, everything on here, literally, is still an estimate.
Yeah.
And what I mean by that is, long-term weighted average, historically, changes five times between now and February.
Because you haven't said it out loud, last year, our long-term weighted average based on the new rules were five point eight.
Yes.
And this year, our long-term weighted average of membership is five twenty-two, almost five twenty-three.
Right. Five twenty-two point nine six.
So we lost, whatever, but we don't have five hundred and twenty-three kids, this is, this is.
These are weighted calculations.
So these are weighted calculations, and so somewhere we lost five.
I, I bet you lots of money that it's in the, uh, especially poverty limit, uh, number, the, the. What used to be the free and, the free lunch.
Number.
Yep, so, so just, this, this is gonna still change, I don't know where it's gonna land, it could get better, it could get worse.
Which no, my concern.
The long-term weighted average ADM, because they're still cleansing and scrubbing free and reduced ratios and, and qualifying children under that. They're still scrubbing ELL, if we have any ELL students in here, they're scrubbing, um, uh, God, there's a whole list of it, I can't think of it right now. But there's so many categories that have, affect the weighting, that even the data teams in Montpelier, they're still scrambling to do the scrubbing. Working with our data teams here, like, like Suzanne Martin, right, and, and Scott Marshy, so they're working hard. This number could change, I'm not convinced that these two numbers aren't gonna change again, I'm not. Because I'll tell you why, everything's been given to me as an estimate, which includes the CLA, it says it in big, bold letter, I can show it to you. These two numbers both say estimate.
Yeah.
So my point is, I have no idea how much more this is gonna change, good or bad.
Yeah. Pass out of.
If, if you haven't seen it.
So we're gonna forward this one to everybody tonight as well, the estimated CLA is across the state.
Yeah, it's just, it's, it's on the state tax.
But it is, it's estimated, so with a lot of things that could keep changing, including the income.
So it is December the fifth. Um. I don't wanna wait till January, so we might wanna meet again in December, discuss this further, if these numbers firm up. Does anybody wanna talk about anything specific on this? Besides Mike?
Uh, I mean, so, so my thought here is. I think the heating project that we have, it's gonna be two hundred and twenty thousand.
Yeah.
Give or take. Is super important for us to prioritize. And I wanna make sure that we have some, we have the money, I mean, I know that we have the money in the fund. I'd hate to spend it on a buy down of taxes if we can keep taxes mostly level. Reasonable, if we can.
Yeah, I, I have similar thoughts, that any building improvement that we do, any, within the industry changes that come with it. Given that we're stuck in stasis right now in terms of overall building, it's super beneficial, and I would rather tell people that with that hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We're going to improve the buildings.
Right.
Yeah, looking at this, I would say that a hundred and fifty is more valuable in the building than, than buying down, or, you know, offsetting the tax rate. I, I mean.
Do you wanna put in a nominal buy down?
So that's what I, that's.
You were talking about, like, a mid-range buy down of, let's say, a penny?
Like, well, like the position, like what you mentioned, is instead of the one fifty, we could put seventy-six thousand down, get it to be, you know.
But, yeah, but then your problem is, is that those positions are there next year.
I think it's just the fact that the positions are there is the problem, and that we're making increases versus, even though we made decreases.
That's the trouble.
It's like hard to. We understand that, like, or why are we adding?
Shifting needs.
We're shifting, right, yeah, yeah. What was it, Mike, when you, is the one fifty in there right now?
In that, one seventy-one.
The one seventy-one, and, and the positions are not in there right now, so I, I mean.
Put the positions back. And let's see.
Two zero adventure.
Well, we, in, in years past, we haven't had the live spreadsheet, this is the first time that we're working with a live spreadsheet.
Well, heck, I don't want, we had a fifteen meeting, they're, I'm gonna do it all in one.
Yeah.
I mean, I got six other districts. Alright, so, 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 just pause for a minute, so, I don't know if we, if I recommend. All right, so, 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 so just pause for a minute. So, I don't know if we, if I recommend meeting again in December, I'm saying that because things are gonna be moving. I think because you guys had the luxury of meeting early. Your, your board meetings are always like the first or second Tuesday, isn't it normal, the second, second Tuesday, or first Tuesday in the month?
Yeah, January seventh.
Because you're so early in the month, I would recommend, we definitely, cause I think the numbers are gonna change a couple more times between now and and instead of always, what was it before and what is it now, and we'll just, I think it will be more concrete. It's something you can actually sink your teeth into with stronger numbers. Across the board, as my gut, and early jail, like your normal meeting time.
Our normal meeting time is a week into January. And the warnings are due the first day of the, of twenty. Yeah, for the thirty days advance, they start, they start really hounding us for the warnings.
So this is, ma- maybe we could get like another meeting in after the seventh, if we had to.
If you had to.
My guess too, is that yield number, that yield number for the past three years has come out in the December first letter and gone hot.
Yeah.
But again, that's.
Every two weeks.
You gotta digger right now, the first thing on the, is the yield might go, they might reduce the spending, cause once he said six percent, the goal was to reduce it from six percent to something lower, and there's a three percent plan on the table and a zero percent plan being dreamed about.
Should we go with the reserve level real quick, just because I, I hear concern that spending some of the reserve for X, Y, or Z, what would you have available? Okay, so right now, at the end of fiscal.
The reserve's actually at six fifteen.
Six fifty-six is your.
No, we spent it down.
We bought, we spent.
Some of that money that hasn't been, that you and my allocate, gets about six fifteen.
Okay, sorry, okay, so square six fifteen, if you were to spend money in the heating project, call it two fifteen. Two fifteen for simplicity, you're now down to four hundred. And unrestricted surplus, okay, that's, then you could use seventy-six, you could use the one fifty, you could use a co- combination and you'd still have unrestricted surplus that I believe will be off the radar, meaning it's gonna be within plus of three minus seven percent of your total budget. They don't want districts carrying, I think it's a plus two or three percent of your total budget in unrestricted. So we may have to drop it to two hundred, my point is, you'd be okay.
But we, but we may ask them to move it.
We move it.
That's a discussion we're gonna have in the future.
Yeah, I, I, I think I would rather, my personal opinion on this is, hold, hold off, let's see what happens with the yield rate. If it goes up, then life is great, cause that, that buys us tax back. And then move what, however much we possibly can to capital in March.
Yes, that's what I think, I think too.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so wait, and we'll wait on the positions, I guess, for that same.
I, I would leave them in here, it was like they're, they're three cents.
What was that last one you did? You just made a change, you made a change, I'm trying to remember what it was, it moved it to one point seven three, what was that last change?
I left positions in, okay, I left positions in, and when I did that, it's causing a three cent increase. And to Eric's point, if the yield rate moves in a favorable direction, which would be up.
Right.
Yes, up, 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 for yield rate, gives relief on the tax rate. Um, unlike the CLA, which works inversely, unfortunately, against us.
Not anymore, not anymore, they fixed it.
Yeah, oh yeah, they fixed it.
They turned it, they, they turned it upside down.
Yeah. Look, so that could easily erase that three cents and more, just with a slight move in the.
Yeah, so let's just wait and see.
I mean, just for fun, we could just see. Points, if it went to eight, six, five, oh. It's basically flat, and that's only a hundred points on the yield.
Right.
Right, if it, if it weren't to, yeah, let's do this again.
Did you already forget how the number though?
Don't worry, I'm, I'm, don't worry, I know, I'm actually gonna do it differently, I'm gonna, I'm gonna do that idea that I talked about, which is, put in the eleven, right? Let it something, so that I can, my end result here, so this, this line will be accurate.
Then you gotta hide that, you gotta hide that line, you, it's just for your.
No.
And then don't let Molly know.
No.
Five years ago, you hit a line.
Eleven nine eight six.
Where's Sal, A five? Sounds like a little neurotic.
Yeah, so eighty-seven hundred, it goes up a hundred and fifty points on the yield rate, you get break even like that, you get flat.
We got a therapist. Three, four hundred dollars last year.
As long as you're in middle school.
Yeah, I just, hold on, actually I do, I have it right here, I always like, hold on, I can tell you exactly how it moves and how many times.
I think the first one that came out was nine fifty, ninety-five hundred.
Here it is. So the first time it came up, like your branch, I had to put dates and who the hell released it.
Yeah.
Brad James released it on December first last year, ninety-four fifty-two. Then Nicole Lee tells me in March, it's gonna be nine seven seven five. And then when H eight eight seven came out in June, it moved to ninety-eight ninety-three. So it moved five hundred and something point, five hundred and something point. Sorry, four fifty, four fifty, in a matter of seven months.
Yeah.
That's what I'm trying to say, this stuff just.
But last year was weird, because the budgets were changing so much, like they were so high, and then people had to cut, cause they weren't getting funded and they had to go back a second try for.
Plus they changed the rules.
But if it moved even more.
Yeah, remember people were adding money back in because of that loophole.
So, I remember that. I remember the loophole. If we're gonna get to a stopping point tonight, if you wanna get to a stopping point, that we hold.
I'll take.
With the, with the positions taken away that we talked about, already being taken away. And then the point four and the point two on the budget that we're looking at, and then the sur- the surplus left in surplus.
Yeah, I think it's the one fifty in surplus.
I would much rather have that in the capital.
Yeah.
I would say no buy down with the point four and point two addition out of them.
Which puts us at the number that we have there, which is.
One seventy-three.
One seventy.
Yep, a three seventy.
And then as, as we're monitoring this budget, we're monitoring this budget, minus several personnel in Paris, minus some teaching positions that we haven't filled. We, that, we've allocated some of those funds to some positions that already exist, and turning them into one point O with a point four and a point two. And then watching this increase from here, and um, trying to hold that money in reserve and reserve with the goal of working on the heating system with that one.
One quick question for Matt, is the, is the community schools funding totally gone, that cab that got?
Well, it's a good question.
Act six and seven.
It was a three year.
Yeah, no, it's not totally gone yet, they're stood there in the last year of it and they're reapplying to continue it.
Are they, are they offering more grant funds for new schools that could join, like if we could just make a part component or after school?
That's a good question. Um, I actually am working with, um, somebody from VREC to look at that grant for RSU right now, actually.
That might be a good, I think that model is great, if we could make that work, for like after school, for the mental health condition.
I, VREC has worked with us to see if we can find some dollars, actually.
Great.
Well, you do that to the stopping point on the budget, no action? Yes, we agree, Tim out there still, Tim's been having real trouble staying connected, is there anyone alive?
I'm alive, I'm alive.
So, did you, did you catch where our stopping point is?
I'm with you.
Okay, okay, good. So we're gonna take no action tonight then. I think that's where we're gonna land it, that's good, everybody. And Mike, you got where we're gonna leave it?
I'm, I'm not gonna touch anything, I'm gonna leave it the way it is, and with the positions loaded, that's.
It's all, it really is helpful to have you here alive with that, especially being alive, it's really helpful to see how this is, this is working, so thank you for that.
I, I think it's, that's, you do it.
Alright, so no action on that, pending a lot of action from the state, we will anticipate having a hard decision day be our next meeting day on the seventh, fourth, but. I, in the meantime, we can discuss it, if we need, we can discuss some concerns.
Just wanna say that this is a heck lot better looking than it was three hours ago.
I was, I had not, I was really sick to my stomach, I'm not.
It's a great air to make.
You're still sharing, by the way, but you're not sharing.
So, I'll share the screen. So if I move down from there, we're done with our business for tonight, um, is there any Republican?
Shannon, Tim's here.
Shannon never came back, Shannon got booted and never came back, but I don't know which Shannon it was. Shannon, I know my Shannon question, we have two employees who are named Shannon. Okay, future agenda items, to discuss in complete form, um, moving money from various funds to capital. So that would, that would include, um, and they're, they would, they would all take individual actions as warnings, but to, to consider moving either on. The capital fund and or to include, um, moving vision to vision funds.
There's also
bucks from special education.
Yeah.
There's a five hundred and eighteen dollars in special education, you spent that down a couple years ago.
Well, cause there was a movement to just move one eighty-three and the one eighty-three five, so that's all I did. I left five hundred.
I guess my question on that would be, why is it five nineteen, since it's been there for a couple years and you know about?
Well, it's all part of the general.
Part of the general fund.
We had this conversation earlier.
So it, so all the money you make goes in the interest.
So that's what it's for the budget, and then, um, it's possible I might be able to bring you, or Natalie might be able to help us bring you a couple of, um, candidates for the coming year for schoolwork, we have one lady here tonight, who you guys met.
Pursuing representatives.
Do we, we're gonna see if she's interested and then follow.
The follow, the follow-up is an interview with a principal and a board member, so if anybody wants to be part of that interview process, please let me know. It was Natalie and if you want to introduce her, there's one other applicant as well, that she's gonna bring us, that was supposed to come tonight, and the, the procedure is they come to the meeting and see what we're doing, and then they get talked about, about how they fill in. And, um, what sort of expectations we would have for them and what sort of information we're looking for. And so if you guys wanna come to some of those, um, please feel free to let me know, two is easy to add into that. Three would be a forum, obviously, so you wouldn't want that to be a meeting, but a second person or two of you would be fine, if anyone wants me, it's okay. So that may be next month, Natalie thought that she would do those interviews, a couple of applicants that she had, so we'll put that as a potential item. And actually, yeah.
Heating controls.
Heating control system, maybe.
Yeah.
If we get the third, um.
We should know if we have a third or if it's refused, right?
Oh, yeah, I, I, we should, we should have a second for sure.
It'll fall through the draft process if we don't, and you'll know why.
Yeah.
And that's probably all I know about, anybody?
If we've made a good faith effort to get three, but we can only get two, we can still move forward.
Yeah, but I'm really hoping for the second, that it's actually something.
But, I mean, the, the, the talk might be, that that might wanna wait till the budget process is finished and the voters finish as well, to see if we have that money. So that's, that's some of that discussion stuff.
Did we wanna talk about investments?
With regards to some of those separate funds such as, I thought about that.
Sure, but that would be moving funds, you said moving funds, but talking about, are we gonna be, what rates we're getting them, right?
Investing, investing.
Investments.
But until the money is moved, until it is moved to a restricted fund, I wouldn't do it.
Maybe.
So wait to the vote, wait for the. And then I highly recommend we'll move it.
We can move those accounts without votes.
Yeah, and, and I think we should have rules, like if, if we have a restrictive balance with fifty thousand dollars or less, I mean, do we really wanna open up? Once we get over to a, a, an amount, a, a material amount.
Right.
Then we start talking about which reserve, restricted funds we wanna move to, you know, that type of a setup.
Yeah, okay, yeah, so that's for the future, and then that's all I've got. So, so all we got, if it is, we can adjourn at eight or nine, if somebody will say.
You wanna add the, um, discussion on the two positions of the point six?
Uh, only as budget items, because we.
Just be in the budget.
The budget discussion.
Doesn't impact.
We're gonna have possible action on the budget.
The budget will have action, we have it on tonight, we didn't take any action, and we'll have it on.
January seven.
January seventh.
So we should add executive session up for the, for the next meeting, just in case. It would, it would have been nice to have executive session here and not need it.
Right.
And to need it and not have it.
Alright, we'll add an executive session.
We can do that.
Potentially. To discuss, oh, I think a lot of our questions got answered. Alright, good, motion to adjourn, anybody? Eight, ten?
Two.
I would love to make a motion to adjourn.
I have a motion to adjourn from ten, Sam, one and eight, ten, I got a second. They told us to, wants to leave, motion and a second to adjourn, eight, ten, all in favor?
Hi, hi.
Meeting adjourned.